Good evening and welcome to our April 27, 2022 Select Board Meeting. We are out of executive session and I call this meeting back into regular session at 7:02. And if everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? It's pretty quiet tonight. We don't have any governmental reports. We'll move on to new business. We have a request from...
Item D is here. Maybe we could just take him first.
How did you know?
He has a sign.
It's not a grave. Here, put your number one.
Mark, as item D, would you like to join us about the poetry contest?
No, not everybody brings a sign.
Go and tell us a little bit about, as a second annual.
Sure. Right. So the poet laureate committee is requesting use of the town common to host the second annual Anne Bradstreet Poetry Contest Celebration. So the contest is going on now. Poems are being submitted. We contacted all the schools, public and private, in North Andover. Have great responses, great number of responses so far. And so on the 21st, hopefully the weather will cooperate, and we'll have the two finalists and the winner in each age category. First and second, third through fifth, middle school, high school, and adult will read the judged poems. And we'll have some other poems to be read that day also. Last year, we had over 90 poems submitted. I think we're gonna go well over that this year. So the response is good. In fact, I was contacted before we had the news out by the school, one of the school librarians, one of the assistant principals, I guess, who works with the librarians. And she said, "I hope you're having the contest this year." So we are. And we'd like to have it either on the 21st, and if it rains, we've requested the 28th of May.
It was a lovely event last year. I was able to attend, and I read our town manager's poem. So I think it's great. It was a great community. It was one of the first community events post-COVID that we had, which was, it was so lovely to see everybody on the common.
And actually, if I could just say one more thing.
Sure.
This is like my dream of having, as a poet laureate, is to have these kind of civic events where people can come together and share, you know, this is poetry, but it applies to any arts or could be music, could be other things, could be crafts. But it's just wonderful to get people together, doing something, creating something, and sharing.
And I think that's why people love our community, right, is when these events happen and we all come together on a common like that.
Right. And I'd actually like to say another thing. The, it's a North Andover-specific event. In other words, you have to live, work, or go to school in North Andover. So it's our event, and that's one of the other things that makes it special.
Any other questions?
Can come to the celebration. Yes, that's what we hope.
It just seems like it's such a growing thing now, because it wasn't, it was kind of a dormant sort of...
Yeah, right.
But, you know, you go to celebrations of life where people write poems for their loved one, and it's just great. There's so many venues where people are reading poetry, weddings, baptisms, again, big events, and sometimes just because it's fun. But, so it is, it's great. And this started a while ago now, and Karen Klein was the huge advocate of it.
Yes.
Look where it's come. So it's all good. I did not know that you were a poet.
I've been working on my other one since April 12th. So it's, I think it's done. I'm gonna send it, but there you go. Get me out of my comfort zone.
I can let you know, I'm not one of the judges.
All right.
And the judges judge the poems anonymously, so they don't know whose.
No, then take a motion to approve.
For Mark Bar, I'm sorry, and Karen Klein of the poet laureate committee to use the town common on May 21, 2022, rain date, May 28, 2022, from 12 to 5 for the Anne Bradstreet Poetry Contest Awards Celebration.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thanks so much, Mark, for coming.
Great, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we'll move back to A and B. We have a request, combined request, correct?
Yes, the, sorry, my goodness, the requests are combined.
We have a combined request for the common on May 22, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. to 3 p... Oh, actually, it'll be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And it is from the festival committee for sheep sharing and from the Merrimack Valley Black and Brown Voices to use the common.
Right, so we had two conflicting requests. We actually had three requests for the common. It's very popular right now, which is great. And they have come together under the guidance of Jeff Coco, who's amazing, and we're very lucky to have, and are working together to have a successful event on May 22nd. And we're celebrating 50 years. Is it 50 years?
Fifty years of sheep.
Fifty years of sheep sharing. It's my first sheep sharing, because it's been COVID.
COVID.
I know. So I'm looking forward to it. We haven't lived...
And in conjunction with the 375th, it's a little bit of a...
Yeah.
Just to keep that in the background or the foreground.
Jeff was telling me they have, the festival committee has some really special stuff planned, and that the inclusion of this new group is going to really make it that much more special. So they're gonna be working, their meeting, I think their meeting unfortunately was canceled this week due to illness, so they're meeting next week to work on how it's all going to be laid out. And Laurie and I are available to support them in any way that they need to be supported, but we're really excited about this partnership, and I think it's gonna be great.
Can I tell you about a few of the events in it? So they'll be doing the sheep herding, and they have the dogs, and they sit the sheep around and things like that. There's supposed to be a horse-drawn carriage. I believe there's ponies for the kids' rides. But, you know, some of this, you still almost don't know until just a few days, because they are dealing with animals and lots of vendors, and it should really be fun. It should really be a fun event.
Are they doing cow bingo?
I don't think so.
No?
That's a really fun thing, though.
Very popular.
Very popular. I don't know what this is.
First year we did that, this was EJ's idea. It was a fundraiser for the parade. And you've never heard of cow pie bingo?
No.
Well, it's, just, just...
It involves a cow, and it involves a...
You should know this, ladies. You're so close to the farm.
It's a great, great.
Yeah.
It's like a bingo card.
And you bring the cow in, and people buy the squares, and wherever the cow has...
That's a dropping. It's exactly what it sounds like.
So that person wins. And then there was a whole prize structure, which was pretty cool. So, yeah, it was, it's, it was a lot of fun.
This sounds fun.
Karen, you're all set.
You just feel bad for the poor cow.
It's already voted on.
Oh, it's already, oh, it's okay. You don't need me.
We do.
Oh, we just think you're great, but no, it's all set.
Can I just say some, two things? Thank you.
You, you don't know what you started in September 2005 when you voted for this, the town, the town poet laureate?
I remember.
Oh, my gosh. It has just grown exponentially, exponentially. And the meeting, I mean, the program we had last May in the common was just delightful. We were so pleased to see first, second, and third graders stand up and give poems better than eighth graders did. They just, and it's, and I have to leave you with a poem. "This book by any yet unread, Rosemary knows it well. This book by any yet unread, I leave for you when I am dead. That being gone, here you may find what was your living mother's mind. Make use of what I leave in love, and God shall bless you from above." And that's what we're doing. You're doing it by helping us, and we're doing it every day.
I wish you were here, because that's, we talked, I talked about how the, thanks to you, this is how it all got started.
On the TV. Is that, oh, it's not Bill. Hi. I thought it might be Bill.
Different Bill.
It is Bill, but not the Bill I know. Oh, so I, that's so wonderful. You're a very good supporter, Rosemary, very good supporter.
Well, you, you worked hard to get this started, and it's just taken off. And that's one of the other things I said, that we hear, poetry was sort of almost like a dying art.
Well...
And now it's just, you're hearing it everywhere.
It isn't in other countries. That's the thing. It isn't. In China, and anywhere in Asia, Europe, I mean, children learn poems from the time they're tiny little, little babies, and they remember them. And it keeps up. We have to do more here in America.
Well, we, we used to have to memorize poems.
I know, but we don't, they don't anymore.
But as a result, what I was saying is that you're hearing people who are writing poems at celebrations of life.
Yes.
Or at a christening, or a wedding.
Yep.
Or just for fun.
Graduation, anything.
Anything. And it's really, it's great.
And you remember them. They're remembered long after you forget a book, or you forget a speech. You will remember a poem, and you pull it up when you need it. And that's what we want children to learn how to do.
Well, you started it.
We're doing it. Greg Gilligan's helping. I mean, even Brian Howard is helping. Lots of people are helping. Kathy Stevens, I mean, I could go on and on and on. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. Have a good night.
So on this one, we just have the one.
We just have to vote on the one, yeah.
But no cow pie.
This is disappointing.
I'll talk to EJ about that.
If we could bring it back.
Maybe they couldn't find a cow. They did have a hard time finding cows once in a while.
I'll move that this select board approve the request of the festival committee to use the town common on May 22, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the annual sheep sharing festival and to close Mass Ave from Osgood to Academy Road.
Do we have to combine the motion?
I don't think so. It's all, yeah, it's all under one, so I think you're good.
It actually said it was removed, so.
I have a motion. I have a second. Second. All those in favor? Looking forward to it coming back. Next, yeah.
It's a fun event.
Our next request is from the North Andover Athletic Association to use Osgood Street, Stevens Street, Great Pond Road, Pleasant Street, and Harkaway Road for the Knights on the Run Road Race on October 8, 2022, starting at 9:00 a.m. And I don't think we have anybody here, but annual event, well-attended, everybody loves it. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I should have deferred to you. You're the one.
It's easier and easier to find me.
And once the war walkers needed you. It was lonely, Catherine, last year.
So we have a request to put in a letter of support. Merrimack College has put in a request for an earmark for a pedestrian bridge to our Congress for funding of that.
Right. So remember that the town, we voted last meeting to do an earmark for, my God, I'm gonna have a mental block. Fountain Drive, Fountain Drive for the affordable housing, Laurie spearheading that application. The application has been submitted. On Thursday, we got a call from Merrimack College asking us to partner with them on this request. Senator Doglio submitted a letter. I submitted a letter. Obviously, we didn't have you submit a letter yet, because you weren't able to meet. Representative Minikuchi is working on getting the rest of the delegation to also get together on a letter. But it would be great to have a letter from the select board as well, just supporting the application.
So Laurie has started a letter. Is that, I just, my only question to the board is if there's anything that you would want included in that letter?
One of the things that I think is important is that I don't think it's an either-or thing. I think we need to make safe crossing on the street with really well-signaled intersections and all the other things people talk about, but there's no reason we can't also have a bridge crossing for those who want to use it. That's all.
Yeah, I think safety needs to be a priority.
And I also think, I mean, I, I forget who brought up the idea, but I love the idea of putting that fence down the middle of that, down the middle of the road on the, on the, on what do they call that thing? In the mediums, thank you. Because that prevents, or at least it will deter students from going that way. And it's not gonna stop everybody, because some kids are gonna jump it, but I mean, it would at least funnel them to the appropriate crossing spot, you know? And without that, I think the pedestrian bridge wouldn't be used all that much, because I think, you know, given the option of going, you know, spending eight or nine minutes going up and down, or going directly across the street, most of those, you know, students are gonna be running late, and they're gonna be jumping across the street. So I think by putting that, you know, some type of a direction to make them go over that would be helpful, so.
But if they didn't do it right there, say, for whatever reason, the state didn't want to put it right, like on the median, I think it would be great if Merrimack College just ran a fence all along 114. Because that, not only, if it's done right, it would look very attractive, and it also helps to kind of keep those people on campus. And I've, I've been talking to Melissa about this, that I really believe they should do that. And I think it will, it will elevate the look of that campus with a really nice, like a black wrought iron fence. I know they have the rail fence, but that doesn't stop anybody from anything.
The only thing, I think it was, it wouldn't stop those kids that still want to cross without going to the, and, you know, even if there's a fence over there, they can get to the fence and then walk down.
Walk along, yeah.
Yeah, they can still get to there, but, but I think that's good, too. I mean, if that's what you have to do, I mean, whatever would help deter them from not using that bridge, you know, that would be, that's two negatives.
Two negatives.
But anyway, yeah, I think, and, you know, maybe we just include in the letter the history of, you know, Mr. Ma, the young student that died in 2011, when he was hit by a car.
They never want to see that happen again.
Melissa, can you just, for, because it was part of the conversation we had at our last meeting about there was such a desire for this, but yet it's so far out of our hands. Realistically, I guess, two things. What sort of the timeframe, and is this possible, feasible?
Yeah.
A long shot, you know?
So earmarks have gone away for a really long time. They just came back last year. We didn't get one last year, so it's always more feasible that we'll get one in the second year. A regional application, or an application that has partners, is always more positively looked at. In my experience, it is something that you usually have to apply for in a bigger project like this a couple of times. That's not the end of the world, because this is a 10-year phased project, right? So do we have to apply for it again next year or the year after? Maybe, but it's the kind of thing you keep at. But it gets it on the radar, so even if it didn't get funded this year, I think us continuing to kind of beat the drum would help. One of the things that's hard, and I said this to the college when we had our conversation, is that with an earmark, you get the money, you have to spend it in that fiscal year, right? So if we get the money for fiscal year '24, we'd be building the bridge in fiscal year '24, right? And so it's not a bad thing to start paving this path now with the realization that maybe it does take a couple of years of advocacy, but we've got a lot of people who are supporting it. And at the end of the day, you know, maybe next year, if it doesn't get, maybe we'll get funds this year, and that would be fabulous, but maybe Andover comes on, you know, with us next year, too. And maybe Lawrence does, because Lawrence has a lot of high school kids that come over to the college to take classes. Maybe it becomes even more of a regional application, which would be great, so.
That's good.
And construction is supposed to start on the corridor fiscal year?
Next fiscal year.
2024.
And that is almost five years of work.
So that'll be 2029.
Yes.
And it need, it would need to be incorporated with that.
Yes. Right, so...
They were taking great shots today.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, there's a lot of work that, it'll be a lot of work to line everything up.
Right.
Correctly. But I think it's a, it's a great, we're always trying to be creative with how we fund things, right, all the time. And this has a lot of regional significance. It has a lot of economic development significance, so it's a good application.
Will we hear back from, like, Senator Warren?
Yes.
Like her office?
Yes. And actually, Senator Markey's office as well.
As well.
Yep. So, you know, we'll get a, we, I believe that the college has already gotten some response to the application, too, so. So we'll keep at it.
Positive response, I assume?
Yes. Yep. So we'll keep.
Just a random thought hit me. Is there anybody that works in either of their offices that's from either North Andover or went to Merrimack College? Because they could speak directly to the experience.
Yeah. That's an interesting question. I don't know. Yeah.
If somebody knew that. Well, if, is there somebody in, in either of the senators' offices who's from North Andover or went to Merrimack College who has had direct experience, you know, or has lived this experience? It's one more way to kind of personalize it and connect it more. Just, just a thought.
Could we invite the senators?
Yeah, of course.
To see.
Short of that, send them a video.
Yeah.
Hey, here's what it looks like, quite honestly. Here's what happens when you press the button.
Right.
Yep.
You know?
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, that'd be interesting. We keep on it. I think that's, you know.
Yes, I think that's great, and it doesn't hurt for other people to write to them as well.
Yep. A lot of it's lobbying, just generally, yeah.
Just taking it on top of my, I didn't get them.
That's why these letters are helpful, you know, so.
All right. With that, I'll take a motion.
I move that the select board provide a letter of support for the congressional funding application of Merrimack College for a pedestrian bridge over Route 114.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will send the letter. All right, I'll take a motion to move into licensing.
Move to open the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? All yours. It's a big agenda tonight.
Yeah, we just got three items. First is an application from Deborah Ingles of butlers and bars for two one-day all-alcohol licenses for wedding reception on May 14, 2022, and June 11, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And a request for a waiver of the police detail. And we've got the full package in here. We do have a recommendation from Officer Landon that the detail be required. And so let me open up to the group here. What are our thoughts?
Well, I haven't been to many weddings where I've seen a police officer, you know, as a detail. And I understand, you know, it's part of our licensing procedures. You know, an event of a certain size would have a police detail there, but I guess I don't know of many weddings that I've been to that I've seen a police officer there. Do they have some kind of private security, or they have some kind of, you know, some type of... And what's the intent of the police detail? Is it for crossing the street? I mean, usually when we do something like that, it's for crossing the street.
The safety.
And I think it's a little bit hard, because now that they have their catering license, they're having weddings every weekend with no detail. So this would be a little bit unusual, yeah.
It's not an extraordinary size, to your point, Dick, in terms of the gathering. Any other?
So is this because, because it doesn't fall under their catering, because it's an outside?
It was booked in advance of them getting the license.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But otherwise, it would just fall under their...
Yeah, and we would never know, right.
One quick, you know, step back before we...
Yeah, I mean, it's not an extremely busy road either, I would think.
Yeah, and time of year. I'll, I'll take a motion.
Do you go for that?
Do you have a recommendation?
I'm fine with leaving the police detail.
They've shown that.
Yeah, I discussed it with everyone at Smolak, as well as Lieutenant Landon in the past. So I'm fine with leaving it.
So I move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Deborah Ingles of butlers and bars for two one-day all-alcohol liquor licenses for wedding receptions on May 14, 2022, and June 11, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And approve the request for waiver of the police detail.
Great. All in favor? Okay, pass. Five-zero. Okay, great. Well, hopefully we won't have to do that again. All right. Now we have an application from Ashley Piazza of Smolak Farms to extend their entertainment license hours on Thursday, September 1, 2022, till 10:00 p.m. Do we have someone here to speak to that?
Yes, that's me, Ashley.
Please.
So our typical entertainment license for Sunday through Thursday is 9:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. for Fridays and Saturdays. And I have a couple who's getting married on September 1, with their reception starting at 5. And they asked if we could extend the hour, where it's a Thursday before the beginning of the holiday weekend, to go until 10 o'clock, and I told them that I would present that.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we've got, you know, everything in our, in our package is accurate. It's really kind of up to our choice to expend, extend that courtesy. You know, it's close enough to, I think we can all say, I would just kind of initiate it by saying, these days, the weekends start a little earlier when it comes close to holidays, I think, especially if we squeeze out the last summer.
Summer is not even quite over yet.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm inclined to have us consider this, what...
I think the sticky point is that we've had such issues there in the past, and we've been very quiet for many years. You know, we haven't had any issues with neighbors there. I know one of the, one of the neighbors that was one of the bigger, was prob, was bothered by it the most, has moved away. But I know, you know, we have had other neighbors to speak up to. So I guess my, my, my request would be to notify the neighbors well in advance, to let them know that, you know, this wedding's gonna go on till 10. Even, you know, just the immediate butlers that would be impacted by it, and let them know, because they certainly, you know, they would be expecting the music to stop at 9, and when it keeps going, 10, I think they're gonna start calling the police inside. So if they were notified in advance, then they would know, so.
I'm happy to do that.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, it's a great suggestion. And rare to have a Thursday wedding, right?
It, you know, it's becoming more common.
Is it really?
Yeah, because of COVID and just not having available dates, and they can save some money. So not, not widely popular, but I am getting more and more requests.
Well, like you said, only the long weekend. It just kind of extends the weekend for...
Yeah, and I think that was, if it weren't, if it was just like a random Wednesday, I don't think I would've said, you know, I'm not even gonna consider requesting that, but where it was a Thursday, I said, how do I have to lose?
So what does that mean, that we'll postpone this vote until we hear from the neighbors? Is that what you're requesting?
That, I guess my suggestion was just to notify them that it's gonna happen.
Have that as a condition?
Good faith.
Yeah.
And maybe just go from 11 down to 9 on the, on the, on the volume, so.
I can, I can certainly make that part of the condition with them and their DJ, just saying that last hour, because it's a residential neighborhood, and because we are extending the hour to be, you know, cognizant of the neighbors and...
That's the time for all slow dancing.
Save it all to the end.
Turn the lights down.
That's usually when things are getting amped up at that.
We're putting the lights on a dimmer this year, so.
It depends on where you are in the spectrum, right?
I will say, one of the neighbors, the butlers, which is the people that moved in to the house that was directly across the pond, actually work at the farm now, because they're so, they just love the farm and everything that we do. And she had said to me during COVID, one of the events is gonna happen again. I like to sit on my back deck. I like to sit on my back deck and listen to the music.
Wow.
It's like, find the right person. Exactly.
Wow, that's pretty good.
That's great.
I think if I had not known that, I probably, you know, things that were, as they were in the past, I wouldn't even have
That's nice.
Given a, a
Thank you for sharing.
Inkling that it could be a possibility.
Chair, I move the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application of Ashley Piazza for Smolak Farms to, from Smolak, of Smolak Farms to extend their entertainment license hours on Thursday, September first, two thousand twenty-two, until ten P M.
With notice to the neighbors.
With notice.
With notices to, with at least two-week advance notice to the neighbors.
Great. Thank you. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And last thing we have is an application from Robert Holland for renewal of a junk dealer collector's license for one fourteen jewelry and antiques located at twenty-three fifty Turnpike Street. Remember when he came in to first start his business? It's interesting, the definition junk dealer slash collector license. But we have everything in the package. Nobody's here to speak to this, but any thoughts or concerns? Thank you. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pass five zero. And motion to leave licensing.
I move to close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we have one consent item, and we will be accepting a donation in the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars from the Joseph and Herman Youth Center to the Youth Center for Program and Membership Scholarships. That's a fabulous donation. That's wonderful. I'll take a motion. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
I attended the night to shine, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event.
I hear wonderful things. I was, I was out of town and I was sad to miss it, yeah.
So Rick and his team, Demi, they did a great job, and the Herman Foundation people.
Well, I think people, you know, you tell people that eager to get back and sort of participate, and you sort of think it's great.
Jackson's counselor last year was the recipient of the, and it was, they did it on the first, I think. They took a picture on the first day with them, yeah.
That was a crew of mini talent.
Yes.
They do everything.
They do a great job, Holly and the whole team.
All right, we have open session meeting, meeting minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Does anybody have any edits or additions to those?
Let the select board approve the open session minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're off to old business. We're going to talk about the town meeting warrant and presentations.
So I just want, yeah, the only thing I really want to talk about today, because the only item we haven't taken action on is actually one of the civil service items, and we're not quite ready for that one yet. Most of the articles I had planned on presenting, the Council on Aging, the surplus article, Jim Stanford is going to present four hundred Great Pond Road. I had planned on presenting the acquisition of Academy Road and the civil service articles. The rest of them are financial, so there'll be presentations on those. I had just two questions. Did anyone else want to present Academy Road? Which I'm happy to prep the slides. And two, my understanding is that the select board will have the opportunity to present for Royal Crest. And did we want to do it like we did last year, where we had people presenting together? I'm happy to start prepping slides for that. Did you want me to present it? Do you all want to present it? I just want to start, because it's in three weeks. I just want to start getting it a little bit more ready. We are still having a North Andover camp meeting about Royal Crest. We're working on the date right now. And the reason for that is, the reason we're working on the date is because we're up to like fifty slides. It's, it's just very dense and we're, there's so much information. So obviously, we would be bringing that number down significantly. But I believe FinCom is also going to be doing a presentation, so, you know, there's a lot of people who'll be taking on multiple parts of it. So, and Planning Board, of course, will be doing their presentation and presenting the actual zoning. So I just wanted to get a little bit of feedback on how you wanted to handle that.
So the Finance Committee is going to present the developers agreement that?
They're going to present the revenue, the expenditures, and the development agreement, the financial aspect. So they actually, if you look at their report, they present, they did some verbiage in their report. And I've assumed that's along the lines of what they'll present.
Right. And then you said the Planning Board is also presenting?
The Planning Board will be presenting the zoning as their article. My understanding is that it'll be a joint presentation, a presentation with a couple of members of the Planning Board presenting together, which will be great. And then that just leaves, there'll be time for you to present as well.
So we'll most likely be asked what the vote was and who voted, and they'll probably want to know the reasons. So maybe is, I mean, I can almost guarantee that's going to be asked. Maybe that's the opportunity to do that and just kind of, you know, maybe reiterate what we said in our meeting, you know.
We could create slides about, like, because
I think it worked out well to have targeted information that we wanted to share.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's up to you. I mean, I can start working on it and then we can decide.
I remember last year, it was kind of a rush.
You had a hurry.
Yeah, we had a hurry, because I took too much time and we were.
We thought we solved that.
Yeah.
We had a lot, though, to fill in.
You're late.
We'll have more help this time, I think, with getting all the information out, because last time it was just you, and you got to present a lot, right? This time, Planning Board will be presenting, and Planning Board will be presenting, from my understanding, not just the factual, now, I haven't seen the presentation, but what I understand, not just the factual portions of the zoning, but also what the positives they heard were and what the negatives they heard were. So they'll be presenting kind of a full package. And then FinCom presenting a full package in the financials. So, you know, your presentation could focus on your sentiment, right, of course? Um, how you voted and why you voted the way you did. But then also, you know, and maybe the affordable housing aspect, that, like, taking some slides from that portion. Up to you, how you want to do it?
If we can, you know, we just maybe, I know we can't practice it, but we just, you know, and I'm the biggest offender, so we have to, I have to talk faster get through my, my material, but yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Maybe we can get some bullet points, like what?
Yeah, we could post a meeting and practice.
Yeah, well, sort of, I think we could learn from our last experience, which is, I think that it's, that is a good format. I, I think we all, I think people felt like we expressed where we're from. We're trying to add to the conversation, right? It's, the data's out there. So I think if, if you could kind of craft something and we can kind of work it out and then break it out again the way we did last time, I think is fair. I guess I would want to ask that there be clarity on the timeframe
Okay.
for this, right? So if you can confer with, you know, our, our town moderator on that, because that was the big limiter, which I can appreciate it, but the more flexibility we have with that, or kind of the, we can deliver the thought more fully. And I would just lobby that, given the scope of this, you know, we don't want to ramble on. Given the significance of this, I think every one of us would like to complete their, their thought on it, so.
Why we have fifty slides for the, right? It just keeps getting bigger.
Two minutes seems a little tight.
What were we given last year for a total time?
I think it was two minutes.
I was going to say, it was like two minutes, but.
It was two, I think, it was really.
Two minutes each or two minutes all in total?
Each.
Each.
And it went in like a heartbeat.
Yeah.
So.
In a way, I mean, that's what he's allocating other people to, though, so we have to be fair in that way too.
Well, yeah, I guess I would say, but, you know, quite, quite frankly, folks look at us and say, or, you know, the Planning Board has their piece, the Finance Committee has their piece, and they're, you know, fifteen to twenty-minute piece on that. And I just, I think the town would want to hear from their elected officials ultimately.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get a, a permanent time. And I did ask, I said, if there's dissenting opinions, how are you going to handle that? He said, the way we handle it is that any dissenting opinions will go from the floor unless they're asked. So, for instance, if somebody didn't, if one of you agree, voted non-favorably on the MSBA article, and someone said, Mr. Nobily, why did you vote that way in the MSBA article? He will allow you to answer that from the floor. From the, from the stage. So, and he said that will be the same thing for the Planning Board. So for the Planning Board, for the people who voted favorably for the Royal Crest article, if they want to get up to speak about the Royal Crest article, they'll need to go to the floor to speak. Okay.
Okay.
We're meeting Monday to go through, like, logistics, so I can get a little bit more clarity from him on the timeframe. Okay. Okay. Thank you, that's helpful. And nobody else wants to, to present Academy Road? I'm just kidding, I'm happy to do it, I just.
You're really convincing.
A snata. You know what I mean?
Um, and we're, we're actually doing a, we're doing the consent calendar again. We're starting at six thirty, like everybody knows. Because we're trying to do it one night. We're doing the consent calendar again like we have the last two town meetings. So items one through four will be one consent calendar. Item sixteen and seventeen will be another consent calendar, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-six. So we'll be taking things collectively again, which will move us along pretty quickly. Consent calendar. So the consent calendar is basically routine business, housekeeping, and there's no discussion.
But I, but the word calendar is what's throwing the
Oh, that's funny.
collection would be, like you said, afterwards would be.
Yeah. So that's what we'll be doing. And I anticipate that we'll take the three civil service articles collectively as well. But they won't be consented, we'll have discussion on them. So, so yeah, we're in pretty good shape. I'm kind of ready for tomorrow, to be honest, but I'm plugging away. And so we'll keep you posted on the date for the town, yes, for the town. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Are you taking questions yet or no?
I believe, we have not started taking questions yet. They will be able to, people will be able to email questions in, in advance, and we anticipate during the meeting as well. And any questions that we don't get to, we'll do like we did for Amazon, and we'll populate a FAQ.
Town manager report, anything to?
I just have a couple of small things. So prescription day is Saturday, April thirtieth, at the North Andover Police Department, National Takeback Prescription Drug Day. A reminder, the town meeting's at six thirty. We have started our warrant article of the day, I want to say we're on article eight. But for people who are, want to just learn about the warrant and the things that are on it, it's a very easily digestible way to just learn about the warrant articles, and we're sharing them every day on social media. So definitely hop onto that. And then just that COVID cases are ticking up, so we went from twelve to thirty-nine. And that's just what's getting reported to us, don't forget. If you're testing at home, we're not seeing them. So just a little bit more caution, you know, we're seeing them in town employees and some clergies and et cetera. So this appears to be a contagious strain that we're under right now. So just a reminder to people to be a little bit more careful than usual right now.
Do you have any stats on, on the second booster at all? Is that being tracked at all?
So I, I mean, I haven't seen anything scientifically, but from what we hear from people, people who have had their second or third are much less likely to be as sick. And also, we've been hearing people who are getting it now have all been kind of getting their, have all gotten their shots around the same timeframe. So appear to be having some wearing off. Yeah. But some people are eligible for their, I mean, you were talking about this? If you're over fifty, you are now eligible for your fourth shot. So, you know, you can go in anywhere and, and get that shot.
Yeah.
So over fifty.
I'm in the barely over fifty category.
I was like, why are you eligible? She's like. Think so. Right, and right across the street, CVS or anywhere, you can get it.
You have to make, they don't have a lot of appointments, of course.
Greater Lawrence Family Health Center still has a lot of appointments.
Good, okay.
Greater Lawrence Family Health Center has quite a few. They each all, they actually all seem to, it's easy to book on their site, and they, last time I looked, they had plenty of open spots.
They are the stars of pandemic.
Heroes.
They really are.
They are. They're so community focused, and they make it so easy and.
They're amazing. I don't know what we would have done without them. So yes, just be aware, and if you are eligible, it'd be good to, to go get that booster, because it's well worth it, so. No problem. That's all I have.
Comments?
And town iCleanUp is on Sunday, I think, starting at ten.
May first, right?
Yeah, Sunday, May first. Maybe nine to twelve. I'm sorry, I can't remember off the top of my head. But I go post all the information, very easy, you show up, they give you everything you need and.
Grabbers, everybody gets grabbers?
Yes, yeah, grabbers. And assign you a location in town, or you can tell them where you'd like to go clean up and spend a little bit of time. So grab your friends.
DPW comes and picks up the bags, so it's not like you're transporting.
When you're done, then just tell them where it is from.
And rain barrels, usual, right? And rain barrels and composting?
Usually, yep, the call, I know that offbeat is, like, there's definitely going to be composting there. You can sign up for that. So they, our sustainability committee is working hard.
Anybody else? The gala's coming?
Yes, I can't speak to that, so. The gala, which is Friday, the thirteenth, which is a good luck day for a gala. Tickets are still available, but we really do need to get those in really soon, and your menu decisions as well. But has a great band, it should be a wonderful, fun night, so come, you'll, you won't regret it. And a hundred dollars a ticket per person, but fantastic band, beautiful food, and also a lovely location. And lots of raffle tickets and raffle items and bidding silent auction kinds of things. So it's, it'll be a fun night, so I'm really looking forward to it.
I told her, Mary, I'm taking my husband's pickup truck, because I plan on winning all the raffles.
Because, as I said, there's so many that everyone's going home with a prize practically. And again, the, the dress, because we don't want anyone intimidated as to how you, you can dress if you have a wonderful, you know, dress that goes to the ankles, perfectly appropriate. If you wear, want to wear a cocktail dress, perfectly appropriate, or pants that are dressed up. And for men, it could be, you could start with a suit coat and tie, or wear a suit, or a dusty old tux out of the back of the closet. All of that is welcome, so don't be intimidated, just come and have fun. That's my pitch. And we're on Eventbrite, and if you look it up on, on Facebook, we're there as well. Or just give me a call and we'll make sure you get tickets. I'm in the book, so.
Home book, what's a home book? It's like, what's a home book?
But I've had it for so long, I'm.
Still in the book, no.
It's with that phone with the cord. It's like the same voice.
Funny story, we were at Harry Potterland, and there's a phone booth, and you can call in. The kids didn't know what to do.
Oh, you had to teach them how to do a rotary dial.
I have an antique phone, a real one, that, and we had to teach all the kids in the family. And they're looking at, and it's like, no, you put your finger around and you go all over. And it was made by Bell Labs, right here at Western Electric. And you can't kill them, they're as heavy as can be. I'm sure Dick remembers that as well, with, having worked there and, and being the closest in age.
They do, Western Electric made phones, but they never made them there. They made switching equipment there.
Oh, okay, well, anyways.
But you can say they did.
We can say they did. So, yeah, it is funny to watch the kids.
Like, we couldn't, we didn't know what was wrong, like, why they couldn't, what was happening, like, why they were like.
Worse than your puzzle book is the puzzle book on the kids' faces. What a fun.
All right. So our next meeting is May ninth, seven P M.
Going back to Mondays?
We're going back to Mondays.
Just getting used to Wednesdays.
So we will see you all at seven P M. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Shortest meeting ever.